Good evening, welcome to the lower rural township board of commissioners June tenth twenty twenty five stated in an advertised monthly meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the mission under indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Just one else to everyone due to the absence of our solicitor John Rice David Keatley from their office Grimbeath and that actually will be serving as our solicitors evening thank for coming Dave.
Good evening, thank you.
So tonight if you have seen but we have a special presentation it's on the mobile stroke unit it's in our parking lot. It's a revolutionary way to diagnose and treat strokes before patients even reach the hospital. So to tell you more, I would like to hand it over to our vice president and chair of our public safety committee commissioner Joe Canelli who's going to take us through the presentation.
Thank you President Kurtz I'm actually going to turn it over to Tom Topley the chief of Benson MMS to allow him to speak on.
Good evening everyone. Commissioners on thank you for inviting us tonight. In two thousand nineteen Jefferson Hospital came to Benson Rescue Squad and asked if we wanted to host a mobile stroke unit in our community and I kind of said we'll try anything once I know too much about it and we started operations about six year ago in August. And as we worked with the stroke unit and worked with the doctors from Jefferson we found it to be a very beneficial tool. A very life-saving tool and we started offering to communities around Benson Town we looked for like a fifteen minute response time from our station. And years ago Commissioner Canelli asked if we could come to Lowermoreland and provide service in Lowermoreland. And there was some some technical issues with getting our scans to Abington and having the hospitals even though they're all Jefferson talk to each other. That's all been resolved so we can now come to Lowermoreland and Burn Athan and provide service. The benefit of the MSU is it's very advanced technology. The crew consists of a paramedic, an EMT, a pre-hospital registered nurse and a CAT scan technician and what we can do is as we get to your house we can provide a CAT scan right there in front of your house in the street. And the images are immediately transmitted over computer to a radiologist who reads them and gives them to a neurologist on call. The neurologist then logs onto the stroke truck or the mobile stroke unit over a two-way computer they call a robot but it's a two-way TV. And they can assess the patient right back at the truck. And they can give us orders to give these clot busting drugs that break up the clot and reduce the the symptoms of the stroke. The other benefit of the stroke truck is we can often do this before you could do it in the hospital even if you were standing in the hospital and you were having the stroke. Because of the way we've done our workflow and work with the physicians. We we call them on the way to the call and they answer us immediately when we call them back in front of the patient. Where if you're in the hospital, there's a little bit of delay due to how things work. So our average time from curb to to the first scan is about eight minutes and to thrombolytics is about twenty seven minutes. It's saving about forty-five minutes or more if you're just go to the hospital. And the physicians we're talking to are from Jefferson Center City. Dr Rosenwasser who wanted to be here tonight but had other engagements is the president of the Jefferson Hospital for Neuroscience runs the program. These are world-class doctors they have doctors all over the world they're cutting-edge technology. So by the time we get the patient in the hospital they're already kind of pre-registered at the hospital. They've already had their first CAT scan they've already been assigned to a neurologist who's assessed them. They may or may not if if they are deemed necessary to have it had a life-saving clot busting drugs administered and then they can go right to a second CAT scan that looks for where the stroke is and then right into a a lab if they needed to have the stroke removed or sometimes the clot busting drugs. You know resolve the symptoms on our own. So you know we've been working with Commissioner Canelli, Fire Chief, the MS Chief, Dr Overberger and we're able to bring this community we're very proud to help you guys out. Happy to answer any questions or anything you might have.
Any questions from the board?
This is I think this is fantastic I'm so I'm so happy to have you guys here. How many like in in our surrounding area how often does the unit get dispatched like what's your like is it every day that it's that it's out that we're that we're doing this or?
So yeah. We have a pretty large catchment area now we do the surrounding communities of Benson Town and now you guys they get dispatched about five hundred times a year. About a third of those times they do CAT scans. And I think we've administered thrombolytics five or six times already this year. When Jefferson first started the program they thought we'd be doing it once or twice a year. So it's been pretty busy and you know we've had a couple really great stories we had one one patient. There's a short window in which you can administer to the thrombolytics and she was so close to the end of the window if she would have transported herself to the hospital she would have been outside the window. And we we got her medication on board with minutes to spare and she had a pretty full recovery. So yeah we we do about five hundred runs a year and this is the only operating MSU in Pennsylvania right now. So you know Montgomery County you got to be first to have it operate in Montgomery County.
That's fantastic.
Thank you anything else?
Any other questions from the board anything from the public on this? Tom thank you very much we look forward to working with you guys here.
Yep thank you and appreciate you guys.
For the workers and providing you guys service. Absolutely have a great evening. I'm gonna turn it back over to President Kurtz at this time everybody take off that.
Just to go over some guidelines for public comment we thank you for coming tonight we invite your comments. Please direct your comments to the entire board please approach the podium if you'd like to address the board and state your name and address for the record speak clearly we appreciate that. The comments will be limited to three minutes. When commenting on non-agenda item please items please keep the comments related to lower more township matters and please be courteous and kind. First committee is the Internal Affairs Committee it's my committee. First item is review and consider minutes of May thirteenth twenty twenty five Commissioner do you have any questions or comments? You're in the minutes. Any comments from the public? Hearing none I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May thirteenth twenty twenty five. Sure sure it's involved. All right do I have a second so motion's been moved and seconded to approve the May thirteenth twenty twenty five minutes all those in favor please signify by saying aye. We already opposed thank you commissioners next is review and consider the June twenty twenty five bill list. Commissioners do you have any questions or comments again it's again EJ brought it us with a very comprehensive bill list. Any questions or comments from the public? Anyone in tune hearing none I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty twenty five bill list. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the June twenty twenty five bill list all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Next item is review and consider our bond parameters ordinance and bond purchase agreement. So this evening we have our bond counsel here Tim Anderson and Ed Murray are bond underwriter the ordinance was advertised as prescribed by law. We have a lot of information our tablets. Last week we received our S and P rating which was a double A plus. And this is regarding our general obligation bond series twenty twenty five gentlemen would you like to come up to the podium?
That is not a working mark.
Oh that's why I was turned up there we go we'll speak loudly well anyway. We're pretty close here so again thank you for for having us. Again I'm just going to summarize some of the points we're here on the thirteenth of May. Again you're funding a portion of your firehouse construction project. We detailed that we're funding a portion of it and keeping this bond issued ten million dollars so it will remain what we call bank qualified. So it'll be ten million that'll get you lower interest rates because we'll generate bank interest. It'll also have a five-year call provision meaning if interest rates come down in the next five years we'll quickly be able to refund these and save you interest cost. So that's the reason that we had the cutoff where we did. It also let you get into the project bid the project fully and then once you have a full understanding of what your bids are and what the total project is we'll come back and do the second pieces. By doing it in two pieces we're also going to give you three four years to budget it. So there'll be no big impact this year and there's only going to be a portion of a budget impact next year. But again the idea was as we went through the last time is to keep the debt service low in the first two years before majority of your debt service drops off. And that's what we're doing. To summarize as as you alluded to we did go through we did a person rating agency we had a rating call. We came back very very positively it's a very high rating. Again they always detail the conservative budgeting the financial analysis that you do. I always say it's a it's a combination of really good policy and really good management. So you've been managing your affairs very well and your fiscal prudency has been well noted by the rating agencies that's that's always nice to hear. I think that's it the motion before you is to adopt the ordinance. The ordinance has I think twenty-two different sections and Tim and I are not going to detail that for you. But it does take all public actions that you need to encourage you that to accept the bond purchase agreement and the other things so after tonight the process will be we're going to release the preliminary official statement. That's the investor document that we use to sell the bonds we're going to release this tomorrow if you approve tonight. And we'll have anywhere from you know a hundred to a hundred and fifty calls or Zooms with institutional investors retail investors all over the country to get as much interest in these bonds as possible then we'll sell the bonds Monday or Tuesday depending on the size the volume when we think the best entry point is but we'll decide probably sometime by late tomorrow or Thursday morning what would be the absolute best outcome so I'm not sure if we'll sell the bonds Monday or Tuesday but we're going to sell bonds Monday or Tuesday next week. Then we'll be all locked in by that midday Tuesday and you'll have the interest rates locked in and closing will happen a month later. So approximately a month later we'll transfer the funds and you'll have them in in receipt of the township and you'll have to find a place to put that. And I'm sure Chris has thought about that and has a place to put the proceeds when we get there. But if you have any questions related to the process the financing how we do it who we sell bonds to what'll happen next. I can answer those Tim can go through some of the operational details of the ordinance itself but anything else I can I can answer for you if you have any questions.
And then either the document too I read the maximum interest rate on the bonds I think you reviewed it last month was to shall not exceed six percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah it'd be lower than that.
Okay.
Right well those are just maximums in the document will not exceed.
Will not exceed.
Yeah the amount says will not exceed twelve million dollars because we don't well many.
Right well then the amount set that's was is for twelve million dollars. Which as I read in your extensive documents will be greater than what will be the final borrowing amount of ten million dollars and that is to allow for I'm going to say amortization.
Yes.
Flexibility and at the time of the sale related to the cost and fees with this whole process.
Right.
So I'm like so just for the public to be
They're very detailed.
It's parent.
There are very detailed rules by the Department of Community Economic Development that makes me ask for some leeway in the amortization. But you're right at the end of the day it'll never be more than ten million.
Okay.
Because that is bank qualified and I have to stick to ten million.
And just by way of background on that actually approving a maximum principal amount for each year the bonds are outstanding and together that amounts to twelve million because some years will be higher some years will be lower but for each one of those we as I mentioned we have to follow with the community Department of Community and Economic Development that what those could possibly be as things look out you don't know know exactly you know each year until a pricing occurs which one which amount will be in which year as you go forward.
Right and it's going to be there is going to be a twenty-five year wraparound could you explain that to?
Yeah so it's not going to be too much of a wraparound but we are trying to delay for the first two years the payment of principal until the last large debt service payments you have from prior bond issues. I think the twelves and the fifteen start piling off ones for a fire truck and.
Which really now one of them has been updated to be the twenty twenty one series which I think that's the.
So they start going away so there's two two debt service payments twenty-five twenty-six and then there's then it kind of filters off so we're going to wrap around that and then we're going to take the next one wrap it around that so it's all level.
So then the implication for that is that it allows us to leverage the existing debt service mileage. Which raises the revenue necessary to make the annual payments we won't start incurring the major payments related to this series until the current series are more paid off than they are today.
So and then I think you discussed it at the last that payments should be a little bit consistent with what we are paying today.
Right hopefully it has the least budgetary impact because you've already budgeted for a certain amount of debt service and that's going to filter off. And then we're going to put this kind of behind it so again the net impact isn't as great. If you look budget to budget instead of trying to pile it on top.
So by doing this we're saving the taxpayers significant increase in year one two.
Yes.
That's what it comes down to.
Yes. So just for
I should be more to the point.
Just for transparency say for the public because we reviewed this last month. But I'm I'm just going to read this it's right in our ordinance and in almost all the documents that this bond is for purposes of providing funds to finance a portion of the cost of construction acquisition of land installation construction management engineering and other expenses related to a new fire rescue station as well as other related miscellaneous capital projects. Financing capitalized interest and paying relating to costs and expenses of issuance of funds did I miss anything?
That is spot on spot on.
Well I remember at the many documents it was in a few but a little bit different worded so this I believe this is right from the ordinance so or what we have in front of us is our two documents it's a motion to adopt this ordinance as described. And to approve the bond purchase agreement with your company Stifle. And that's what we have in front of us does the board have any questions? Okay does the public have any questions? No one in the room how about on Zoom does anyone on Zoom have any questions? Thank you for that and hearing none I will make no I will go for the first is I will make a motion to adopt which ordinance seven eighty-two is described.
Second second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number seven eighty-two as described all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Thank you commissioners the next is a motion to approve the bond purchase agreement with Stifle as described this evening. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the bond purchase agreement with Stifle as described. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Thank you commissioners next item on my agenda thank you so much thank you. Next item is review and consider. Okay. Next is review and consider construction management consultant appointment. So commissioners we have a memo. So we have a memo and I'm going to try to highlight some things from the memo prepared by manager Hoffman. And it's basically everything that took us till tonight. Okay so throughout the last several months we worked with construction management firms to solicit proposals for their services as part of the fire rescue station project. The construction manager will be the township's direct representative through the entirety of the upcoming pre-construction and construction processes. They are an important advocate for the township. The pro or the process yielded five proposals from firm firms across the reason region. We sat down to talk with CHA which was formerly Dewey Engineering Oil Construction Paul Harris and Company which is P H and C. J J White and Gorski Engineering want to thank Commissioner Hausman and Commissioner Canelli. We were the working group. And chief showmaker manager Hoffman we met with these five firms on Friday May thirtieth and Monday June second. These interviews yielded two clean options to give the township the guidance of protection during this large project so we had it narrow narrowed down to CHA and oil construction. Both firms defined a process and they have the necessary staff to provide the services our township requires. So we had great and nice conversation with P H and C J J White and Gorski Engineering. PHC and J J White are great companies but they work primarily with with private companies. So we were a little concerned about them not really working in the public sector meaning municipal work. So Gorski Engineering functions as the prime contractor on all contracts through a program like Co-Stars. So there is some validity to this approach but we were concerned about the perceived lack of transparency because they don't go through a public that the way they operate doesn't allow us to go through a public bid process and the public bid process is more transparent. So just to go over a little bit about the scope of the work our chosen construction management firm will immediately begin leading us through the pre-construction process and the first task will will be to guide an RFP to select an architect. Once on board the architect will round out the professional team including the construction manager the engineer fortunate we're going to have engineer Tim Woodrow and our traffic engineer Bowman to be able to help us with this. So between twenty twenty-five and December twenty twenty-six we will complete the pre-construction tasks that will be including zoning zoning review and possible text amendment the township even though we're starting this process we have to go through everything everybody else does land development preliminary and final plans and P T E S permit which is stormwater PND H O P highway occupancy permit building plans and permitting. The construction manager will be our project manager leading regular design meetings for the duration of the pre-construction process. The construction manager will also lead the bid process which requires separate bids for each prime contract. A prime contract is a general contractor plumbing electrical and mechanical I have to say all three of us maybe Joe knew a little bit more than us but we've really learned a lot right Ruth good job. So they're going to guide us guide the township and any Co-Stars purchasing which can be accomplished to avoid markups through those prime bids. They will also coordinate with the township solicitor's office for these contracts. Once our construction begins the construction manager will be the daily site representative for the township as they coordinate the entirety of the construction process. They will vet all payment requests and we strive to avoid significant change orders. We talked a lot about change orders and the importance of them the strong pre-construction process is the best way to avoid frustrating change orders. The construction manager will also provide the necessary documentation for grants we may pursue during the project. Grants can help offset the balance of the second bond issue necessary to fund the project balance. Finally they will also provide us with a comprehensive capital plan for all the new systems installed in the building so the board can adequately prepare for future replacement costs. So regarding fees anticipating a twelve-month construction schedule. The fees for CHA and oil construction we have this in our books commissioners to let everyone know and to be transparent their CHA's pre-construction services is a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars. Construction is approximately four hundred and twenty thousand for a total of five hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Oil their pre-construction services was a hundred and five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars their construction was three hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for a total of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So we we might it's possible that we could exceed the twelve months as the project is you know subject to weather conditions procurement periods and many other items that would be beyond our or their control. CHA stated that there could be a possibility they would go beyond the twelve months which would require township staff working with CHA to manage these additional costs. CHA can also manage grant applications for the township with no additional expense. Oil construction said they would help us start the process with a grant in particularly we're talking about this RAC P grant. And then they have an additional company that they recommend to take over and help us with that grant. Which they'll provide the documentation for the grants but we'll have a third-party writing firm. So upon all three of us as commissioners meeting and our working group consensus was to recommend the township select CHA and it was for two major reasons. First the township we we have been familiar with CHA and the team led by Jamie Lynch as they were our school district's construction manager for our high school project right right across the street. And Mr Lynch is a strong advocate for his clients. I I sit at every school board meeting on Zoom mostly I have to say now because of the pandemic. And their communication and problem solving abilities have been amazing. Their team included necessary experienced professionals in construction and emergency services and I felt very comfortable with both of these firms it was one of the most difficult decisions that I have to say all three of us had to make. But you know of course it's up for discussion with that the entire board. On further research I personally took a deep dive into looking at both firms and I did see that CHA has worked on completed on undertaking currently a great deal of municipal projects and joint municipal projects like what we're looking for combination projects of fire ambulance police administration emergency operations center and they've come in below or at their budgeted expenses and save time on the job. Again, another, another one of my experiences sitting as liaison to the school district. They do put in contingencies and other financial, just in case they run into a snap through here or there. And the school district was able to receive a decent amount of money at the end of the project back. So it might look a little higher in the beginning, but at the end they're, you know, very good with cost saving. So that's my opinion and I like to, you know, open this up particularly to Ruth and Joe first and then see if you have any questions or comments to ask, because we couldn't have more than three commissioners. I would have loved to have all of us there, but Joe, you want to say anything? Did I leave anything out, maybe?
No, you gave a great summary. Again, all the contractors that presented were remarkable, what they put to us in their presentations. That being said, as President Kurt stated, CHA and Boyle were definitely the two front runners. And it was a very difficult decision going between them. CHA definitely landed out with their team professionals they presented that I am very confident in that selection in going forward with this project. Ruth?
Both CHA and Boyle had quite a lot of experience building fire access, firing the municipal. And that certainly was high on our list of priorities. It was a very difficult decision. But I'm curious to hear what you folks have to say.
I had, thank you. And I appreciate all the work that you put into this. What are some of the, like when you were having conversations with all the companies, what were some of the, I guess, common problems that, you know, caused like budgetary overruns? Did they talk about anything? And really what I'm interested in is really how CHA responded to that. You know, because I think, you know, Denise, what you just communicated, you know, the reason for moving forward with CHA is really their familiarity with the township, the experience that they bring to the table. And they can be incredibly valuable, especially when problems come up and a little bit of dollars upfront can really save you a lot of dollars on the backend through the project. So maybe you can just talk, if they discuss that, maybe just share a little bit of that.
They did. And like I said, I took a a deep dive and they, I drove over and saw the Fort Washington Fire Station in Upper Dumball, which is pretty local. And I think they've done a great deal of local projects. They were at Way to Hold Township. So it was a police administration building and it's a net zero building. I love Boyle too. But I just, I feel that they've done a lot of projects close to home. And they've done a Springfield Township Municipal Complex, which was a public works, a salt shed, a garage, a library and police administration building. So it's a lot of combination buildings. And then there was one in Massachusetts, which actually you might even be able to pass by and take a road trip there. They have, it was the borough of Emanuel in Massachusetts. They did a town, they worked on a town hall, central fire, ambulance, police station and administration. And it was just, I know initially it's a little bit over eighty thousand dollars in the forefront, but every one of their projects in looking at them, they came in before the timeline, exactly on the timeline and were able to slash slash time and slash money off of the project. Like that one in Massachusetts, they said the timeline was slashed from forty-eight months to twenty-four months, delivering significant cost savings. Also another layer that I saw, you know, in the interview was they, it was their presentation, they both had great presentations, but CHA, I think, was a little bit more tailored to our exact needs. And, and, you know, Joe being on the front lines, you know, they came in and said, gee, you know, this is your, this is the firehouse and you might want, you know, a single stream metal roof. You might want to look at this, you might want to look at that, wire your wish list items, do you know what I mean? Decontamination areas.
Yeah, I'll jump in for a minute. So to get to your question, Dennis, the biggest thing you can do to streamline this is know what's needed and being able to over-in advance. They have a pipeline and the control do that and forecast when the products will be needed and be able to get them in onsite to speed up that process. Either be the Co-Stars or the other brand options we have available. Also, the in-house grant writing would save us some money compared to the outside with Boyle, that would be an added cost, which helps trim the difference between the two.
And time too.
Exactly. And the familiarity with having them do the high school project definitely gave them a little bit of an edge in this because of the working relationship with the township and manager, most importantly, that they already have pre-established.
And they also said that they're very, very, you know, with, when they start writing for the RFPs for the primes, they're very, they're very strict with regard to what they require these contractors for primes to come in with and helping us try.
I think that's probably the most important thing.
Yes.
And when it comes to that process and how you control.
To weed out.
Ultimately, a public process that is very challenging to control because we are subject to low bidding, provided that the bidders are otherwise responsible and responsive. So what are reasonable ways that you can put requirements on those contractors so that you know that you're dealing with a qualified entity?
And avoid scum.
Exactly.
We really keep them up on change orders.
Yes.
We asked their percentage, we asked how they manage them, we asked how they avoid them.
And how did CHA compare to?
Well, C E K and Boyle were, had very low change order percentages.
So they did what they were supposed to do on prime. And I think that's the most important.
Yeah, it's all about planning and preparation.
What's it cost to write a grant?
I come into that. Do you have any idea?
So we didn't get to that point of having a specific proposal. I would say based off of our experience in that, I don't know, seven thousand, five hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. So it's not
Huge, but.
Yeah, within the scope of the money that is being requested, it's not overly material, but it at least is irrelevant.
Yeah, because the spread between the tiers is roughly ninety thousand dollars. Not even eighty thousand.
And that's where the premise for why we invest in this process is that construction management is the ultimate value proposition on the top of the project. So whatever their specific cost is, really when you're looking at the grand scope of what is being done, you're saving in your process regardless.
In a second, Joe, he just reviewed
Thanks.
Pretty extensively about the construction management consult, consultant appointment. Do you, did you look over that?
I did, I did.
Do you want, do you have any questions? Okay, all right. Any, does the public have any questions, comments right now in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom have any comments for the board? Leah, no. Okay. With that being said, I'll make a motion to CHA as a construction management firm for the fire rescue station project.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to appoint CHA as the construction management firm for the fire rescue station. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Next is a record, records destruction resolution. So a tax retalience is an annual list of records that are eligible for destruct, destruction in accordance with the provisions of the municipal records retention and disapproval. This program's allowed the township to effectively manage our records within the time and limited space that we have. So there's a resolution in our books and stating this basically, just to let everybody know, sure you saw it, it's administrative and legal records. Some of them were sold from 2012 and the latest one here is twenty-two and 2019. We have some personnel records, some payroll records, general finance records, tax collection and assessment records, public works records. We're still some years behind. So wait, if we need them, they're accessible. Waste management and sewage disposal records, planning, building zoning and code enforcement records, we have fire records. And then L M P D, some of their incident reports from 2018, P A uniform prime reports from 2022, parking tickets 2023, receipt books in 2022, citations, traffic and non-traffic from 2019. Does anybody have any questions regarding the records destruction? Okay. Anyone from the public in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. If not, I will make a motion to approve resolution 2514 and that'll be authorizing the 2025 records destruction process. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 25 dash 14 as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, next is administrator report, manager Hoffman.
All right. So I don't have too much to add because so much of the major things that we have been working on just culminated in the last two agenda items. So we will continue to work towards the construction process for the fire rescue station. So that still has our one outstanding parcel acquisition. And through the construction management process, the next immediate thing is to do the RFP for the architect. And then one item that I will steal from EJ because she is at a rescheduled baseball game last night. The major thing that we have been working towards, also just a major planning item is that the trash bid has been advertised. So those bids will open in about a week and a half. So we will do the review of that pricing for our trash recycling collection and disposal to be able to have a recommendation to the board at the July meeting. So another one that has been kind of making us nervous out in the background is finally going to come to fruition and we will be able to talk about very specific numbers next month. And then the final item is that we did have our, and maybe I'm stealing some thunder from chief showmaker. We did have our most recent emergency services committee meeting at the end of May. And the direction from that group, and as we have discussed previously, is that Fetter's Mill Fire Rescue will be formed as a separate nonprofit. So we are going to begin on the incorporation documents and all of the things necessary to get that set up for some time next year, just essentially working on a timeline as soon as practicable. So those are the major items that we're working on in addition to all of the day-to-day items at the township.
Thank you, manager Hoffman. Does the board have any questions for manager Hoffman? Does the public have any public comment for manager Hoffman? Anyone on Zoom? Yep. Okay, manager Hoffman, I will accept your report is submitted. Next is our tax collectors report. Our elected tax collector, Jane Sale. I see you out there. Hi Jane.
Hey Denise, thank you very much. So we have face collections of ninety-one point fifteen percent. The actual collections, which includes the discounts, it stands at eighty-nine point thirty-seven percent for a total collected of seven million, six hundred, ten thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars. I mailed four hundred reminder letters for the taxes to be due this Friday, June thirteenth. We have extra hours this evening till eight o'clock. So if anybody wants to run in between now and eight, I'm here. And I will be here all day Friday from nine until four thirty in the afternoon for anyone that would like to come in and pay their taxes.
Is that, are those your regular set hours, Jane? Or is that something we should put extra, have Leah put that on, on social media for us?
Well, tonight was extra till eight o'clock and then Friday is also extra from nine until four thirty P M. I was going to send EJ an email.
Great, great. EJ or Leah will take care of that. That would be fabulous. Especially count some of those extra hours. Let us know.
And the letters have been profitable. People are coming in with them.
Thank you. Thanks for your work, Jane. I'll accept your report is submitted. Does the board have any other questions for Jane? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the room? Thanks, Jane. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next is my liaison report. Now I'm liaison to Lowermore Township School District, Lowermore Township Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee and the community of Lowermore Township Community Events. So first, Lowermore Township School Board, the meeting took place Tuesday, June third. I attended the next morning. Have to say, I fell asleep, the dog and I on the couch. So we watched it at five thirty in the morning because he gets me up early. But there was two impactful discussions at this meeting. First was the budget proposal that the school board and the business manager have been working really hard on most of the year. And they'll be voting on that June seventeenth, their June seventeenth meeting. So I encourage, you know, residents and anyone to really watch, watch the meeting because it affects everybody and see what's going on with the school district. And also they had a C S I facilities review. I know that's always important to all of us. So the school board will be making decisions on the facilities project priorities. So they discussed a lot of things in each building and they're working on the imminent needs. So they'll be voting on both of those items and you can check the website out at www.lmtst.org. Next is the diversity equity inclusion, the community engagement committee. The last meeting was held on May fifth. I'm still not sure. They said we're having a meeting tomorrow night. And that is the high school graduation. I have a ticket. So I reach out to Mr. Cole and I'll see if I can split myself because he starts a little bit early. So we'll see what happens there. That's the last meeting of the year and then we'll meet next year. And we're just going to continue to work together and foster more equitable, inclusive school, a school environment for everyone. And that's a really nice group. Next is Lowermore Township Community Event, events. We are always looking for volunteers. So if you want to volunteer, please do so. Send your name into info@lowermoreland.org. We have, we're going to hold a first live meeting on Wednesday, July ninth. Time will be determined and we want to keep, we want to bring more people in. Any age, anyone that wants to help us. But we're just all volunteers and trying to have some nice events for the kids in the community. Our trunk retreat was date set, everything for the fall set. That's in October. Our movie night under the stars is set. I know H V A reached out. They set their October Fall Fest, which I believe is going to be their first week in October. Our fire prevention day, national fire prevention runs from October fifth to eleventh and that'll be up to the powers that be to set, you know, one of those weekend dates and we'll keep in touch with Bob Shali and chief showmaker and chief medalman regarding that. And then really I will be looking for an environmental workshop to schedule. Other than that, we've been all set for a few months. And then if you have any questions. Okay, anyone from the public have any questions? Because that concludes my agenda items for the evening. Sorry, I know my agenda items are always really long. So next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Mueller, Chair of the Community Development Committee, Dennis.
Thank you, President Curtis. I have a couple of items on the agenda tonight to go through with some other issues. I'll try to get through these fairly quickly. First item on the agenda is review and consider dumpster location waiver in store twenty-five eighty-seven Huntington Pike. And you may recall several months ago, we approved a waiver for event development process for third use of twenty-five eighty-seven Huntington Pike. And this was the occupied basement space. At the time, we didn't identify that there was a shared dumpster agreement that they wanted with the neighbor, which was at twenty-five seventy-nine Huntington Pike. So essentially what this is, is modifying the existing agreement with allowing a dumpster to be shared between the two neighbors. In your package, you'll see a letter from the owner, also a letter from the the neighbor saying essentially that it's okay. The net impact of this, it's one less dumpster, one less waste receptacle on a very tight property as it is. So I'd like to ask if there's any questions by the board?
None for me. I think it's, I think it's great that they're sharing.
Any questions from the public or Zoom? Hearing the questions, I'd like to make a motion to waive the saddle requirement for the dumpster to be located on the property at twenty-five eighty-seven Huntington Pike.
So motion's been moved and seconded to waive the saddle requirements for a dumpster to be located on the property at twenty-five eighty-seven Huntington Pike. So, motion's been moved and seconded to waive the saddle requirements for a dumpster to be located on the property at twenty-five eighty-seven Huntington Pike. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
The second item on the agenda, on my agenda is to review and consider building permit fee schedule. And in your, in your packet, there's several page memo, essentially we're updating some fees that cover. Uh the third party that that's involved, uh I think the last time, and Chris correctly for wrong, we're reading through. The memo or maybe Jill or Ted can jump in here too, it's the last time that they were raised is twenty twelve, is that, is that right? So we just based that off of Keystone's appointment date. Though the fee schedule that we have with Keystone upon their initial appointment was handled one way under an old building permit fee structure. Then, I think for their first full year in twenty thirteen, we changed to uh their current hourly rate, the way that we pay them. Overall, I don't know that we've updated our building. Probably twenty years, so it's making sure that twenty twenty-five costs are more aligned with the fees that were collected. So in in the fees, I mean, they, you know, the percentage sounds like it's high because it might be fifty percent in some cases, but we're raising from fifty, fifty dollars. Uh seventy-five dollars in increments, whether it was fifty to increments of seventy-five. Uh there's a solar panel fee, and I guess that's new, is that new, or did we always have that? That's new, sorry, so that would be three fifty. Some of the other highlights on here, roof permit goes, goes to flat rate of residential is is one fifty, that's probably significant. Uh there's a bunch of other incidental fees, I think, that are in raising things here, so. I if you've had a chance to read through the the memo, I'll ask if if there's any questions without reading through uh the fee schedule.
I just have a quick question for Jill and Ted, just to make sure, I mean, are we, we're in line with these fees with 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 other municipalities?
We're probably still about that.
Go ahead.
No, we checked a lot of other municipalities, I think we're still under.
Okay.
Some other municipalities are, so I think we are pretty much in line.
Right.
So this gets us closer to where we should.
Yeah, the only one I have an issue with right now is chapter twenty-eight under the zoning for uh residential, we're jumping from five hundred to a thousand. So somebody needs to go for a bearing on fence or something of that nature. From zoning, that's exorbitant cost.
I asked the same question and 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 thank you, Commissioner Canelli, for bringing that up. So on the zoning, it requires an advertisement. And we are grossly, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, we are grossly under what the advertising costs are. Uh what's necessary. And it's the combination of the advertising, the fact that the board pays for the zoning hearing boards uh solicitor, as well as uh. The zoning hearing board members do receive a small fee, so those three things are, you are subsidizing.
Court reporter.
And a court reporter, we have to, because they're a quasi judicial hearing, so tho- those four expenses. Right now, the township is subsidizing every zoning hearing application.
So then how do we eliminate the need for some of this for zoning, such as pre-existing fence that's six feet. Going to four feet, and now we can eliminate this process where they don't have to go in front of this on a year.
So that's probably a bigger conceptual discussion, because right now your zoning officers are only able to act off of what is the letter of the zoning. Anything that is not true, that they are not empowered to make that decision solely, so we would need to start making very specific modifications. To the zoning ordinance to rest of the.
So Ted, if someone would like a fence and they're in compliance with the height. And everything where it's being placed, you won't have to go to zoning here, but you won't have to pay this fee.
That's correct.
But it's only if you want something a little different, right?
Want something that doesn't. Then you're gonna have to go to the zoning hearing.
Yeah, to to your point, there there are specific properties where there's a good. It's like, it's tough to apply the same thing across four thousand something properties. So corner properties or or those that even might have. So part of the review that is being done, Ted and Jill have this comprehensive list of zoning set out of fire. Uh other codes that are, it due for some update, though things of that nature, we're going to try to address. So that if it is because of a very like unique property compared to the way that the code would be uniformly applied to others. We're going to try to recommend an amendment to the code that that better handles those situations. But I I think for the most part, the the many of the variants request that we get maybe other than front yard fences. That are triggered because of properties that have multiple front yards, most of the other instances are people that are seeking to do something that's just objectively.
Gotcha, dealing with setbacks and so on, and I understand that fully, but when it comes to the simple stuff like this, I think it's exorbitant to add on to a project. For no reason, and and my favorite that because all it's doing is hurting our residents. So I understand why we're doing it, but it's still a lot, and what about upping the non-residential to help offset the residential? And some type of balance there.
We don't get a lot of commercial.
Hmm, that's because we don't have the time to.
And and we looked at that, Joe, too, with like um looking at residential and the fence, and. We thought this was a pretty good balance of, even though we used to be five hundred or we had it proposed to go to a thousand. Um it's still a loser, right? So uh most municipalities zoning hearing is a, they're not making any money on it, they're not even breaking even on it. Um so it gets you a little bit closer, um and we thought this was probably the fair end of it. To, I mean, fifteen hundred doesn't even get us the full amount. Um so the the person who needs the fence in the front yard. We thought about that at a thousand versus fifteen hundred, and when we think this is where the.
Where we can rationalize still subsidizing some of the cost. And not going all the way up to the fifteen hundred, but at least to get you closer. Um and I I would caution against too much more uh weight on the commercial side of things. Because you would look at the way that the businesses are already paying taxes and fees to the township. Uh they're often larger spaces, so any improvements that they do have higher building costs. They are assessed higher than residential properties, they're already paying more real estate taxes. We have uh the uh business privilege and mercantile tax that are. I would not recommend hitting businesses more than we already do.
But if I can offset slightly higher commercial compared to residential, it would be fair. I appreciate your opinion on that, I just disagree.
One of the other things uh that we, that uh, got you, Manager Hoffman, and I discussed was. You know, I I always the same concern of keeping the residential fees as low as possible. And potentially even significantly increase penalties, so if there are, if there are. If there are in instances where it's clear that additional building permits or other permits are required. And rather than, you know, rather than just simply doubling it, having a much higher penalty system for. For certain building things to to be able to offset some of these other things, but. You know, in in short, that at this point, you know, this seem like a reasonable.
From the zoning hearing board application perspective, even if it's just any of the advertising that we have to do, as long as we are required to post an ad in a newspaper room. As close to daily circulation as possible, we are going to incur.
Yeah, and I understand the print costs that's going through the roof, and it's absurd because ninety percent of people probably don't even read.
And to that point also, like there's proposed legislation in every session to. Run one ad to say this is where Lowermoreland posts their legal notices now, and that can be our website. And you could remove the entirety of that cost, and that bill has never made it for the public.
Gotcha.
So I have a question, I might be completely off base, but I'm just trying like, how do you, how do you, how do we save money on the, on these? Is it, is it just the app, it was the application fee? And and a part of going to the zoning hearing board, um and all those fees, but at the same time is, and and we might. Probably have a legal requirement, how is only hearing board meeting every month, applications come in?
So no, the 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 fees are very based very specifically, we only incur them if there is an application. And if you only have the meeting, if there is an application.
Look, you remember me for a minute here, my my thoughts are, how can we save the residents money? And, you know, maybe could we have more applications, you know? And and it's going to your.
The advertisement is specific to the.
Each single one.
So you're you're too, it's legitimately a binary choice, you can either have more cost. Come from the specific application because we are only incurring the cost when they apply. So that's, in our minds, we want is the more equitable thing, your your way to reduce the cost is to spread it across forty-five hundred taxpayers. And just subsidize.
See, I'm the opposite, I would raise if our costs are fifteen hundred dollars, I would ask the resident who wants to make a change in their property, that's against the code, they pay fifteen hundred dollars. Rather than have every resident report their cost for the change of their property.
Right, which is why we think that going to a thousand for now while asking a lot of people is more. Before we get to the full point of, because depending on the amount of. Uh relief being sought, the what we were paying per word on the the legal ads, so you have to define what is being. What the 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 relief request is, so similar applications won't incur as much of an advertising cost as more complicated application. So it's not perfect across the board, as to you will incur X number of dollars per application, we just thought that this was about a round enough number to. To cover more of the costs that you are incurring because these applications.
So I put in a bug round pool in my property down the shore, I have a corner lot, I didn't know I had two front yards. I learned the hard way, it cost me twenty-nine hundred dollars to go in front of the zoning board that I had to pay, I wasn't, I trust you, it wasn't split amongst the township. I paid for it myself, I just feel like if you want to order your property, the resident should have to divvy it up.
I got you, what's the penalty right now for failure to obtain the permits in the first place?
So building permit, it's one hundred percent, so it's doubled the fee.
And what's the typical fee on the building permit right now, it's all based on size and scope?
Yeah, so it depends, like if someone's doing a deck or the addition, it's very, very different, right? As far as the fee.
What's an average deck permit? So go to eight hundred? Do you think doubling it's fair enough, or do you think it should go higher than that? I have no problem doing that. With going up.
Yeah, so one of the things that, one of the things that we discussed was that it it probably take additional discussion. Come up with a fair penalty system because of, I'm where, I'm where you are. In that, you know, if 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 somebody is is putting an addition on their house, they know better to have a permit, it's not that. And I understand that, you know, part of this process is there might be a ripped out fault that that individual would incur, plus the double fees. But I would even go further to try to offset and bring some of the other fees down for somebody that's making a simple change.
Right, and we can help define for you the frequency that that happens to help guide what like the. How important of a discussion is this? If it happens twice a year, we're probably not going to change anything, it's happening forty-five times a year, that's different.
Yeah, and some of the conversations that we've had, even in 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 these meetings with just blatant disregard for building permits. You know, it's outrageous, so, you know, I would rather see a much heavier penalty and encourage people to get more permits. So that we can ensure that people are doing the things that they're supposed to be doing, that that protect the properties, protect the the protective, so. You know, but I I think that's gonna take some more work. And, you know, this seemed like a a fair balance, I understand. You know, there is a an increase, you know, substantial increase, but when I heard. And I've experienced this myself and having to put some obituaries in the paper, cost of advertising is significant, I'm not even sure who. Is uh subscribing to some of these papers, but I think we can work on maybe to change that. Um, you know, I I kind of feel where the Commissioner Pace feels, and that if an individual is seeking relief. Because it's something that that isn't part of the ordinances, then it should be the individual that's paying those things.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have, you know, Ken, Jill and I have been working with so many different residents that have the corner properties and the fence issues. So I, you know, and you and I have spoken about that, to put that on your book list, to take a look at.
It's on the list.
Changing, I know it's on the list, but thank you.
Corner lots and lots that even have reading.
Right, because if we, if we can help change regulations there, then they won't have to possibly go to the zoning hearing board and pay that fee.
So, so can we, I can, I guess, just maybe we can look at those things that are more common, that are more incidental. And things that are traditionally given to to change that, so they don't have to define.
Are there any questions from, from the public? Please come up, make your name and your address.
Mark, George Down Road. Mr. Mueller, you stole my thunder about the the violations. Uh I think. From what I've seen over the years, uh our town's pretty remiss in terms of. Catching violators. Uh I can tell you that a lot of work is done on the weekends in secrecy. Uh and I'm sure that uh the uh building inspectors have heard the soundbite, I didn't know. Uh for all of those reasons, I I think the the dollar should be from penalties. Uh and rightly so, a lot of them are repeated, are repeat offenders, offenders. Uh and I think they get on pretty lightly. Uh I see no reason why you you couldn't make the lines uh. Back up uh the losses there. One thing about fences. I'll just bring this up. Joe, you told me I wasn't getting uh the trees bore the fence. We're getting a siding. We don't know what's gonna be, what that's gonna, the sights and sounds of that, we don't know if we're gonna be looking at cars or there. I think anybody along down route uh that's exposed to this step to change. You would be allowed to take that eight-foot uh exception, there used to be an eight-foot exception. That's now born out of the E coat.
The way to the fence that backs up to the railroad tracks, you're saying?
Yes, yeah, that used to state it was uh in certain districts, you could have an eight-foot fence, that's now gone. Uh so for. For uh. Issues like that, I see no reason why somebody that's along the railroad.
Go to the wall, twenty feet tall, I don't care.
Well, uh can I get that in writing? But uh, no, I think, I do think that uh. For a si- a situation like that, you should be allowed to put up an eight, eight-foot fence, there's no property behind there. Uh and maybe that whoever decides to do that, they shouldn't have to pay a thousand dollars to do that. It just should be from who, who's ever interfering with that, but. Uh that, that uh I think needs some consideration. And then the the violators that do work uh in in the dark and you.
Uh I agree, I agree with you a hundred percent, and I've asked um, I've asked uh Jill and Ted to to look into neighboring townships. On what their penalty structure is and to come back to the board with uh some recommendations. And how we can be a little bit tougher on penalties, because I I I I agree with everything that you said, that, you know, maybe we give some time to. To to publicize this and say, you will, you need to, you need to apply for permits, and and I I wanna make it even fairer that if you're. If it's something that's that's less significant, maybe a light for like water heater replacement, uh something like that, that. That's a little bit uh more forgiving, but if someone's putting an addition on or carving out a new driveway in in a space, then then. Permit should be gotten, if they're not gotten, then there should be much tougher penalties to try to offset some of these other things. And maybe if we can add to this is is look for some of these instances of our fence sites. That we can change the ordinances so that a resident will have to uh go in front of the zoning to report, just practical stuff that to be done, so. Thank you for your comment, and uh so with that, I I'd like to, yeah, give it the honest.
Uh no, I just think we need more teeth in terms of.
Agree.
That's all, alright, thank you.
Um as such, I.
I'll give you your comment.
I I'd like to make a motion to approve this Resolution twenty-five fifteen for amending the permit fee schedule.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-five fifteen, amending the permit schedule. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
The next item on my agenda is the Building Officials Report, uh by. Who was the officer?
Uh, we've had eighty five permits issued for the month. We had twelve meetings with homeowners and contractors. We had thirteen use and occupancy permits issued. Uh, Joe and I attended a PASO meeting in Lower Southampton. Um, that's the Pennsylvania Association of Southernian Officials. Um, and we just completed our state audit. This shows compliance with building codes for accessibility, so we're waiting for that report to come back. That's it. Any questions?
Could you tell me how about the weight of grass? That's allowed. Not allowed.
The height of.
How high can your grass be until you get fined?
So we've been having a couple complaints about grass. Um, I know we have one on Pine Road and a few others. So, um, twelve inches for the height of the grass is what's allowed.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Uh, thank you, and I will accept your report is.
Thanks.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks. The last item on my agenda is my liaison report and uh the Penny Pack Ethological Restoration Trust uh has not met their meeting. It's next week, so I will report. Next month. That concludes my agenda. I don't have.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, so I did have an email. If you would like to take Sean's. Um, ordinance committee, I don't, and Dennis would have an issue with that, but Dennis is the official liaison to the ordinance committee, um, but. What Dennis, what, go ahead, since you looked at it, and we will pass it on to you to for your review. Um, we'll see.
In April, the board authorized advertising in ordinance adding three items to the vehicles and traffic ordinance. They are France Road parking restrictions, Bucksmack at County Line, left turn prohibition, and limiting commercial vehicle parking on all roads. Uh, Solicitor Rice's office has advertised the ordinance and. Now we can actually. Uh, vote on it. Does everybody remember what these are about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seven eighty three as described.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number seven eighty three as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, um, we township uses three state codes which were recently updated, therefore we need to update our codes. Um, to reflect the differences in the state code. The first is the building code, our local ordinance chapter eighty two. Uh, reference that's following current uh Pennsylvania Construction Code, which is usually FCC. No amendment is necessary, but we will be giving legalizing the two twenty twenty one business code. The fire prevention code, our local ordinance is chapter one oh five. Specifically references the two thousand and fifteen international fire code. The state is now recognizing the two thousand twenty one code, so our ordinance needs to be updated to reflect that change. Uh, and lastly, the property maintenance code, our local ordinance chapter one fifty. Specifically references the two thousand twelve international property management code. As with the other two, the state is now recognizing the two thousand twenty one code, so our ordinance needs to be updated. Uh, does anyone have any questions about those updates?
But no.
Anybody from the public? Okay, and um, make a motion to authorize advertising in ordinance, updating the fire prevention and property maintenance as described.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize advertising and ordinance updating the fire prevention and property maintenance codes. As described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm the one talking. Clearly by accident.
Thank you for doing this.
Because the company here has three applications on its agenda this this month, application twenty five fourteen. Um. The folks at thirty three ninety one Philon Avenue who seek a variance to allow a fourteen foot side yard aggregate setback where fifty feet is required. And to allow a three foot side yard setback where a minimum twenty feet is required for a carport. They also seek a variance to permit a five foot solid front yard fence where four feet and fifty percent open is required. The work has already been completed and this is a second application. If I remember correctly, our board uh. Recommended not. Um, is that correct? Does anybody remember?
I I don't, I don't remember, but I I sat, I sat at that meeting for Sean and they were, they were denied.
They were denied.
So, so Ted, Ted, Jill, they're coming back again.
So the commissioners didn't take a specific position, but it played out in the way that I think we anticipated that.
Yeah. Um, application number twenty five fifteen, the application of the Kaminski's of seventeen twenty one Reading Road. Who seek a variance to allow a deck to be three and a half feet from County Line where four feet is required. To allow an in-ground swimming pool, eight feet from the side yard setback where ten feet is required. I think all the commissioners should be invited over to hear this.
Yeah, that, that, I agree.
Um. To allow an equipment pad six and a half feet from the side your setback where ten feet is required and to allow patio to encroach in the rear and side yard setback. The last application is twenty five sixteen, the application of. The minimums of twenty four sixty Morgan Road, Morgan Run, excuse me, who seeks a variance to allow seventeen and a half. Foot rear yard setback where twenty five feet is required to construct the deck. So those are the three that will be up this month. And the zoning board made five decisions at their main meeting, application number twenty five oh three. Uh, James Vesey for sixteen thirty three Republic Road who sought a variance to permit. And an outdoor storage structure and his variance was granted. Twenty five ten, uh, the application in the signs of two fourteen County Line Road. Who sought a variance to permit a six foot closed fence where fifty percent open is required. The variance was partially granted to allow the closed fence and for a portion of the fence boarding the neighbor's property to be six feet tall. The remainder of the grass was denied. So they're not getting all the way around, but on one side. Uh, application number twenty five eleven, the application of the Moreyeras. Of twenty five twenty seven Morgan Run. If anybody's listening, I apologize if I'm butchering your name. Who sought a variance to reduce the rear yard setback from twenty five feet to fifteen feet to allow construction of a deck. The variance was granted. Application number twenty five twelve, the application of the Turniacs. Uh, of twenty ninety five Pine Road who sought variances to allow existing non-conforming setbacks. To remain for a new construction building and to permit parking within the required year rear and side yard setbacks. The variances were granted. Last application, number twenty five thirteen, the application of the Matthews. Of twenty six fifty nine Bonnie Lane who saw the variance to permit a six foot high private sequence in the front yard. Where four feet and fifty percent open is permitted, the variance was granted. Aye. Does anybody have any questions on the zoning hearing at board and agenda? I'm usually does. And is it, right? Then I'm missing one.
Thank you, Mr. Phil, um.
There's no need to building those whatever appeals.
And just the next zoning. Hearing. For G and A will take place June nineteenth at seven P M.
Complete Sean's.
Thanks, Ruth. Just in light of what we heard from Mr. D. George and the board's comments and just, you know, quick dialogue with our code. So I'll send you an email. Um, and also what we heard tonight um from the commissioners and just. Take a look, you know, I know you're concentrating on those, you know, looking at those corner properties and how it relates to our code. But maybe, you know, look at also fences. With the rear, say, to commercial or special circumstances, I would say. You know, and the height, can talk about that, all of us.
I've got an old codebook in my office, so we can take a look through to see what was missed in twenty fourteen.
Mm-hmm. Specifically MU. Yeah, different, they'll, they'll look to a look at different showings.
Mixed use.
Next, yeah. Okay.
And I would, I have just the the terms that are most frequently. Requests and that we have an idea of it because that's maybe something that should be changed and, you know, I fences seem to come up every month. Uh, where there's a change in height and and I understand. Yeah, why people want a higher fence and it's, I guess, why we have fences.
Yeah, we we have a whole list. Uh, myself, Ted and Jill, and also just finally what uh was mentioned also by Vice President Canaly and some some of our other board members, which I think is like. The situation with these repeat offenders, or if they they uh, they work. Um. You know, perform the work. And maybe, you know, look and figure out with Major Hockman. Uh, see what everyone else is doing, maybe some other municipalities. Um, and possibly take a look at up in those fines.
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you so much. For taking care of Sean's agenda tonight. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Canaly, Chair of the Bulk Safety Committee, Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz. First item on my agenda is the permanent appointment of uh some L N P D police officers. On July one, twenty twenty five, Officer John Kretzky.
Rizinsky.
Kretzinsky and Javon Brown are scheduled to complete their one-year probationary period with L N P D. On July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, Officer Joseph Capelano. Scheduled to complete his one-year probationary period, Datlano.
There is.
And I put you, you know, I I follow you.
Great.
Oh, dude. I can't say Von Brown now when I can't. So with that being said, their dedication to this community and their willingness to do whatever is asked of them has been tremendous. Chief Smith is recommending appointment of all three. I'm gonna make a motion to permanently appoint Officers John. Chris Sepp.
Rizinsky.
There we go, Javon Brown and Joseph Capelano. To the Lowermore Township Police Department.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to permanently appoint Officers John Krezinski, Javon Brown, and Joseph Capelano to the Lowermore. Township Police Department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chief, you're up for your report. So you're funding.
Can you say Scott Smith?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that on the the vote there. Uh, I did submit my full report, um, just to add on these officers. Uh, we did try to catch them because I don't think we've ever gotten so many positive compliments about three officers. In the short time they've been here, uh, we were thinking maybe they're handing out cards with like a phone number on the back or something. They have people fall in, but uh, but they're doing a great job, so we appreciate that. Uh, month of May, we had uh one thousand seven hundred fifty seven calls for service and again includes both our proactive and reactive uh patrols and activities. Um, year end for bus patrols, now that's school year, uh, we're probably gonna finish with approximately nineteen hundred violations from the start of the school year till the end of the school year. As I said last month, we did start to see a small dip in the numbers, which thankfully we're seeing, um. Just as a point of reference, we're at about seventy five to eighty percent approval, so um. Currently, it's two of our traffic safety officers that are uh reviewing these violations. Uh, some of the things they consider are the specific definitions in the law, when the school bus is putting out the sign, are they fully stopped? Um, the ability for the person to stop, so if the sign comes out and the person has legitimately just come into the view of the bus, um, those are some of the things that they're looking at. Um, and there's also been a few system errors that just happened with it, and that's the good news about. The company first reviews it and then they send it to the police officers that we have to approve everyone. So like I said, we're about seventy five to eighty percent approval rate each month. How many school days are there a year? One eighty or something?
Hundred eighty one.
So that's about ten a day.
Yes. A lot more than we were thinking we would ever see, so.
And how much money do you have?
Uh, I don't have the final number, but we get as um the township, we get twenty five dollars per violation. So that goes in there and like I said, we're taking about the eighty percent approval rate. Fifty grand.
And what is, and what, how much are the violations typically?
Uh, three hundred dollars. And it's a civil violation, so it doesn't involve a driving record.
How much goes the school district?
Uh, I believe they get a much smaller portion as well, but they, I believe they split the portion with bus patrol. I'm not sure exactly what there's ours is a maximum of, and that's what we get, twenty five dollars.
They were the smallest delivery.
Smallest.
So the school district's in more?
Yes, well, this should get more and bus patrol.
Because we have two seventy five.
So chief, even though they're going around a bus, they don't, they don't incur any points or anything.
Correct, yes, it doesn't end up on the driving record. Um, now, if they were stopped by an officer that catches them in that violation, it's a much different story.
Okay.
Lines are higher, um, these township and municipality get a lot more of that probably there. And I I think I did say we have had some repeat offenders, but thankfully that's also died down, so. Any more questions on that before I jump into the next one? Um, crimes, so we have had a couple more theft from autos and theft of vehicles. Um, again, almost all of that unlocked. We did have our first one um in this cycle that they did um. Punch out the lock on the vehicle and actually remove the locking mechanism to get into the car. Um, we're not a hundred percent sure what they may have seen, but generally if that happens. Um, it's similar to on the trailheads when they break a window on a car, they've seen something of value in the car or they really want that car for the reason that may be. So again, just that reminder, we did push it out on our social media again. Lock your cars, you gotta hide things that are of value, preferably you bring them inside, um, but just be cognizant of that. Um, that several more noise and dog complaints, those are two of the biggest um. Community problems we're seeing. So again, remind everybody be good neighbors. I know it's, you know, party season, graduation party season, um, music can't be heard fifty feet beyond your residence, so keep those things in mind. You have your dogs barking, bring them inside. Uh, this kind of, and also, of course, your dog has to be on a leash and clean up after your dogs too, so, um, again, be good neighbors, be good, um. Residents and help everybody out with that. Certainly make our job a little bit easier and your your neighbors a little happier. Uh, fireworks laws, um, again, that stuff's gonna be coming up. We we routinely post them. Again, we'll we'll put them out on social media again with Fourth of July coming up. Um. Pretty much just another, mostly not allowed in Lowermoreland. You're you're pretty much not gonna meet the requirements for what's the distances that you would need to um put off fireworks. Um, if anybody's been getting the fraud texts like I do pretty much every other day, uh, from Penn Dot Motor Vehicles, you can ignore those, those are a complete scam, um. Most likely, I should say, most likely, you're not gonna get a text, you're not gonna get a text from Penn Dot or Bureau Motor Vehicles for that, so uh they will send a letter to you if that's needed, um, so you can avoid them. Or ignore them, excuse me. Uh, community events, we had a pretty busy month. We did take part, um, uh, Commissioner Pace's, uh, the H B A Friday Night Lights. We had a couple officers out there for the entire event, which was a good thing. Um, in honor of Police Week, if I know a couple commissioners stopped by on May sixteenth, we had our pop-up police party in the side lot, was very well attended. Um, we had bounce house, shaved ice, arts and crafts, some swag that we were giving out, uh, axe throwing, which was pretty good. It wasn't actual axes, it was the blowbacks, uh, blowbacks with Velcro on, so nobody was getting hurt, uh, but it was a tremendous event. It was the first time doing that. Um, Detective Calabiano and um, I'm sorry, Detective Samuels and Bretta or once again, really did a great job setting that up, so we thank them for that. Uh, we had a local homeschool group come do a station tour with us. Uh, we had two groups each, um, so totaled about thirty plus kids that came in, uh, got a tour of the police station. They also got a tour of the firehouse as well. Uh, we took part in the Upper Southampton's annual touch a truck event, uh, so we had our supervisor's truck out there. Uh, the only problem we had with that is one child did find her the emergency button in the police vehicle, so they found that and hit that. They were trying to drive away with it, but thankfully our uh, our controller was there and took care of that and made sure he didn't drive away with the car. Uh, we also, another one we're very happy about, we had our first ever autism uh related crime scene club uh that we partnered with Autism Cares for, uh, very great event. That was on May twenty second, and the good news is we have our second class of that. There'll be three classes total. Second class has come in June nineteenth. And then upcoming also, the thing we've brought back after a couple of year hiatus. Uh, retirees, we invite back all retirees for coffee and conversations, try and get every old retired officer, just send all the employees to come back in, um, just kind of meet some of the newer officers and and kind of a good thing for us. That'll be coming up in the end of June, so. Uh, a lot of good events and hopefully more to come, so.
Any questions for Chief Smith?
Thank you, Chief, I wanted to also thank you as, as um, being proactive in the parks, um. I saw, you know, stopping, giving kids or adults riding, those I guess are e-bikes. Um, and motorized vehicles, so that was also, you know, a few warnings on your, on your list, so I think that. That's another chief complaint.
Yes.
Questions?
Any other questions online in public? No, thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our Mr. Shelley is not here tonight, his report was submitted, Chief Shelley.
I have Bob's report as well, a lot of our things cross over, so I kind of. And we'll try to be brief tonight because most of my events have been covered on our other items. The month of May's been very busy for us in the emergency services field, uh, as you can see through the different reports, we've uh. Attended or I responded to a number of calls, we'll touch base in a little bit. Most importantly, tonight, got to see some leading-edge technology that we're bringing into the community for our residents. Uh, I can't say enough about the folks that have been out there, the, the stall tonight. They've also been out five or six times through the month to do the training for our different platoons, so we can get them all. Uh, scheduled at a different dates, including our stipend crews that went up and participated as well. So we were able to accomplish that within the month, one little last piece, we're just working out the dispatchs with the nine-one-one center. And hopefully that'll be done within a day or so and we'll be up.
I have to thank Commissioner Canelli, our Vice President and Chair of Public Safety. His expertise is invaluable. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, again, we mentioned about the training for that, uh, in addition to that, we did a number of uh, special operations trainings with the Montgomery County Special Operations Team up at the cathedral. Uh, we were working on some issues of bringing patients down from the top of the cathedral, because there's construction work that's going on there right now. That was pretty intense, took most of them one day on a Saturday to accomplish that, but uh, we did get that done. Um, we did a lot of work down at the Glory Day Towers on fire prevention and pre-planning, we took the tower ladder down and we're trying to look at our reach ranges from positions. And where we're at in the building, as well as the manor across the street, and we're successful in that. I've met with Glick, the fire equipment company that sells us the fire apparatus, I did the final sign-off on the new engine. The new engine will go into production probably in September for that November delivery. And we're on schedule, that may be just a little bit ahead of schedule, so we're hoping that's the case, we'll see how that works out. Uh, we mentioned that there was a problem with the tires with the tower. At the last meeting that we uh, have purchased, there was an defective tire uh, set on there, they've been replaced, uh, they came in, took care of that right away, took the truck up. Had it done and back the same day, so that worked out well. Uh, our response statistics for the Station Nineteen, which is the Huntington Valley Station for the month of May, we've had our benchmark fifty-three percent of the time. We did find a little snap due in our uh, data that we're collecting with the way the reporting system works from that station. Uh, when we put in parameters, it goes in and picks out those different pieces, and when we looked at the personnel piece. We found that it, it's going in and looking at the entire list of folks that have been entering for the call, not just on the suppression apparatus, so we're trying to. Figure out how we can extract that out, because that number's probably a little bit lower on the percentage that they're in service, but for the benefit of the doubt, we put down the fifty-three percent. Uh, from the other station, the Renata Station nineteen-one. For the month of May, uh, we met our benchmark eighty-six point nine percent with a response time of six minutes and twenty-one seconds. With an average of three point seven of suppression personnel on the apparatus. And on their reporting system, I can go in there and actually extract out the people that are on the first out fire engine, and they're all suppression personnel. Both the failing to their system is. It doesn't, not the folks that are on the ambulance that may be available trailing them that actually become firefighters on there, so they're actually meeting it over a hundred percent of the time, which is good. But for the sake of the reporting and the way we pulled out, we'll just go with the eighty-six point nine percent. Uh, some fire calls of interest, on five one twenty-five at fourteen thirty-four hours. We were at twenty-nine ninety-two Frank's Room for a commercial building fire, it was a Friday afternoon. Uh, we got a location with heavy smoke issued from the north end of the building. Turned out to be a machine that was on fire inside the uh, building itself. Uh, thank you for the ordinance about Frank's Road Parking, because I gotta tell you, when we lay fire hose, it's very challenging when there's a lot of cars parked in the street that shouldn't be there. Uh, what occurred there was that a machine was in process of being cleaned up for the day. And this is part of Bob's report as well, uh, the machine. That's those plastic extrusion, when they, they press up, press together with the plastic in it for a certain amount of time. Pull apart, scrape it off, and they're, they're actually big parts, I think, that they're making in there. Uh, what happened was, they were cleaning up for the day, gentleman was sitting there talking to another person, we were able to pull the videos and watch this whole event occur. Uh, it went past the time allowance for the actual uh, machine to heat the product up, so it actually started a fire. We can see the fire start go up into the ventilation system. Uh, the gentleman thought it would be wise to grab an airline from a compressor and try to use that to extinguish the fire, but if anybody knows anything about fire science. Oxygen is not a good thing to do with fire. So the fire actually took off, got up in the ventilation system and took the entire ventilation system out with it.
Who's trying to blow it out?
Yes. So, uh, before we got there, the rest of the employee base dumped about probably five or six extinguishers, I think, telling that. And did knock most of the fire down, we went and did the final extinguishment and uh, mop up for that. On five ten twenty-five in nineteen fifty-seven hours, we were dispatched to Pineview Drive, I won't give the number on it for residential structure fires. It's a kitchen fire, can there's an appliance fire, the first at peace there uh, was the engine from the other station. Uh, they arrived with heavy smoke conditions within the kitchen, active fire still going on. Uh, it was knocked down and everything was done, we were there probably for about two hours on that, we had two burn victims on that call. Uh, just a word of caution, and for the residents or the folks watching. If you're cooking in your kitchen and you're using grease or anything, it can possibly ignite, make sure you have a lid or a pot lid next to you that can cover that up. Because they can wave the air that we talked about, it puts the fire out. Unfortunately, in this case, the resident decided that they're, they were gonna grab water from the hose off of the sink into a oil pan that was burning. That's another major, you know, it just takes them, takes that, moves it up and it's like adding gasoline to it. Uh, on five eleven twenty-five at seventeen thirty hours. Two twenty-five Thelmon Avenue in Lower Southampton, we're dispatched to assist on a structural fire, which happened to be a body shop. Uh, we had a fire on the back of the building, it was an attached uh, accessory structure that went for a compressor room. Uh, we were in service down there for about an hour and a half. And then on five eleven twenty-five at twenty-one ten hours, we were dispatched to Byberry and Huntington Pike for a vehicle rescue. Uh, we had uh, two uh, folks heavily trapped in a vehicle that was on the side up against another vehicle, up against the light post. Uh, we were in service there, only had extrication for probably about two hours as well. Uh, one of the interesting facts of that call, uh, we had our mutual aid fire police in surrounding the area, stopping the traffic. We had an individual that breached the uh, control point of the fire police. Actually came down at us where we were working, our crews. Uh, the police departments actually able to get that person to stop, but not before they ran into one of our analysts'. Uh, that person appeared to be impaired, I believe, and result was arrested and brought to the uh. DW one, okay. Uh, with that said, the analyst was the minor, it was minor damage to it fortunately, but this is the things we face when we're on the street. And the safety uh, issues that we are very concerned about, and we take very serious, uh. One of the things I'm gonna try to look at and talk to Scott a little bit about is maybe adding the fire trucks, a couple more of the accident calls to do blocking for our, our first responders. Who are out there, so we can keep them safe. And uh, lastly, I'm not gonna go into all the stats of all the calls for the different areas, but for sake, it's just an interesting statistic, because somebody asked for this before. Our call about some of these uh. Assistant living or senior living facilities that we had, just an interesting point. Uh, up to this point, this time this year, we're at eight hundred and eighty-eight calls for EMS dispatches. Uh, in Lowermore, and we have five hundred of those calls. To the facilities that we have that are high coal vans. Uh, the Huntington Valley Nursing Rehab actually was zero, only because it's not open yet from the, the major event that we had there. Uh, the Glory Day Towers, we had thirty-seven calls their year-to-date. Gloria Day Manor Campus dispatches were thirty-eight calls for the year. Artis Senior Living, nine calls, Carson Terrace, thirty-two calls. Crescent Fields at Huntington Valley Senior Living, ninety-one calls. That's a huge percentage of our call volume. So that's something I think, Joe, we're gonna have to look at on the EMS side and see if there's anything we can do to intervene with that, I'm not sure we can, but. Um.
They have nurse practitioners, occasionally visiting physicians, but not in-house to.
And I, I think what happens, and I don't know this from a fact, but I think what happened to staffs there, somebody complains that was going on and we have the call.
Well, here's the issue that's occurring there, the vast majority of that is independent living, so therefore it's like your typical apartment anywhere else. They're not being seen by the facility staff or treated by the facility staff, would be the same as if you're calling nine-one-one for your help. They don't have contracted providers, and frankly, we don't want that, because our guys.
I just don't think it'd be extremely high for the, the amount of.
Looking at the population that's in there, it's just, and it's an aging population, where, where more people are getting complaints. And with that being said, how many of that are left assist where we're actually transporting, that would be the real number. Absolutely, we can look into that though.
Anyway, that concludes my report, Bob's, if any questions, somebody happy to answer.
Chief, I want to apologize, I gave Joe a, a raise, calling Chief Emergency Services, but in Public Safety, and you, it's your. Both of you, your expertise and your experience are invaluable to us.
That is necessary.
And to me.
Uh, Chief, when do you think we'll have resolution that the all reports that you're putting together in the beginning of, of your, of your report each month? That will have consolidation that, you know, you'll have, okay, I have one report, what's the timeline, and I'm not asking you to rush it, I'm just.
No.
When, when do you expect that this will be done?
I'm hoping beginning of next year, I'm hoping this year, but it's a pretty comprehensive undertaking, because we have to take. We, we've chosen the program that we're gonna be utilizing, and it's used by the other stations, called ESO, it's Emergency Services. Like, I forget what it is.
Organization.
Organization reporting, it's just a company corporate name. The company that.
January it's on.
Okay, it's. It's costly.
Quarter twenty twenty-six.
Okay, this really is gonna lead into budget times, it's costly upgrade to that system for bringing the other station. Probably gonna be about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar cost, so we gotta figure out how we're gonna do that.
Big sell.
Yeah. We're busy going to all these EMS calls, so. Any other questions?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Um, then just one item related to the uh, new engine. So with that timing, that means we're going to incur costs soon, we are financing one hundred percent of, of that. So I will talk with EJ about getting proposals. Um, for the seven-year financing program that we aim to do for that, so that we can bring that back to the board. For approvals, so that we can actually have funds for release when it's time to do. So that will be on the upcoming agenda.
Any other questions from Chief? Nope, thank you, your honor. All right, that brings me to my liaisons, first up was Civil Service, we haven't had a meeting, we'll report there. Next one is the Huntington Valley Library. So this is their busy, busy season kicking off, it will begin on June twenty-first, August third. Everyone's in, invited to participate in the events for all ages are playing. Uh, it will be from the kickoff party, it will be on Saturday, June twenty-first, from one to three P M. With games, crafts, DJ raffles, and later refreshments, all that's ready. And thanks to the sponsors at Huntington Valley Library. You can get more information at their website, and this is the summer learning program, which is their largest reading event of the year. That's all I have back to you, Denise.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Canelli. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Yep. I don't, thanks Denise, I don't see review and consider a DCED MTF grant resolution. As briefly discussed, during a sketch plan review for six fifty-seven Redline Road. The Township Traffic Engineer developed an improvement plan for Huntington Pike Redline Fetter's Mill Intersection. So based on the initial investment, we recommend seeking grant funding to accomplish the preliminary engineering for the improvements. Uh, there's a resolution attached that authorizes a DCED MTF grant application in the amount of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And this authorizes the board president and township manager to sign any grant-related items. Let's look up for. And moving into the intersection.
Yeah.
So, any questions for the board? From the public? Uh, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash sixteen as described.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty-five sixteen as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner.
Wait on you, Public Works, kick it over to Steve.
Yes, I'm reporting, just give a couple things, we're. Busy construction season for us, so we're doing our prefer the, uh, research thing, I haven't heard from our contractor yet when they plan to start, but I would guess end of June. Beginning of July. Um, we had our biannual local bridges back tomorrow, uh, engineer came out the whole mid, inspects, we have five, six local bridges. That they take care of, gives us a nice template of things that we could fix, since they'd be fixed in future. Um, white gate order. We're working on the grass, grounds, about it. Keep on keeping on. Anyone have any questions?
Time you spend on red lines, like cleaning and. Yeah, because.
So we try to go down at least once a week, in the winter, we can go down two or three times, but uh, in the summer, maybe once every other week. We don't reach that often, but.
Also, I want to help them out, when I go in there to check it out.
Mm-hmm.
I said I also don't mind helping out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a good team effort. And I also asked, um, you know, HVA hired one or two gentlemen to be there during the day until about five o'clock. So I'd spoke to Brad Sorkin about, you know, saying if, if they're, they're, they're people could help out too a little bit, so. He was pretty excited.
I don't think that that's like specific duty oversight, it's their.
No, more to just, yeah. Yeah, but they, he did say, if they're there, I'll make sure that they, you know, if they see. Bottle, trash, or whatever, they'll take it out.
That's right.
So it's just nice, just, I, I just said as a teenager, you know, if we could all work together.
Yep.
For the community, that's what it's about.
Sounds good. Next item is my liaison, HVA, just stick with that, so uh, basketball tryouts are underway this week. I was in there last night, the gym is clean, um, they do a pretty good job. Cleaning up after, so last week and this week are travel basketball playoffs. Um, baseball is coming to an end. The uh. U-ten Bulldogs are in a championship this, either Friday or Saturday. So if you're around, I'll be at Ridgeway, I'm sure they'll put it on their Facebook page and try to get some community members out there, so that should be a good day.
Do you know the time, Joe?
I, I don't.
Yeah.
They're still watching the weather, because it's a little funky for this weekend.
Yes.
But that'll be at Ridgeway one day, Friday, either Friday night or Saturday. And then, um. Soccer, they just finished almost, um, for the first time ever, they have four teams win the Pennsylvania State Cup Championship. Three boys teams, the two thousand eight boys, the two thousand ten, and the two thousand fifteen boys, which my son has once said, that was pretty cool, they had it down at the Union Stadium. So they had six teams go, four of the one, and then the twenty-eleven girls. Won the championship, so they were the only girls, but they won the PA State Cup Championship, and now they advance to regionals. My daughter's on that team, good thing this year the regionals is in Concha Hopkin and now West Virginia like it was last year. And that's a four-day tournament over this weekend, so the girls are excited for that, uh, with an opportunity to go to the Nationals in Tampa in July. And uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pace, next the chair recognizes Commissioner Housen, Chair of the Public Property Committee, Ruth.
Hi, you've probably seen, uh, the reports of the proposed budgets and service cuts for SEPTA. Uh, it's pretty significant. Uh, and given the importance of the SEPTA service in our area. Particularly with the Philmont and Betters Regional Rail stations, we don't want to see this reduction in service. So while we don't have any direct involvement in this decision, we've created, um. You know, based on one from Norbert and uh, our crack quarters. Uh, a resolution asking the state to create a, um, permanent funding source. And to maintain, like, the current levels of service. Um, if the board is inclined, we can share the resolution with our state-level representatives. And just so you know, our, our state-level representatives are on board with. Several other municipalities in the area have already done it, we're in the process. So, should I move the resolution, it's not very long, right?
I, I don't know that that's necessary, I think your summary has been. I, I don't know that that's necessary. I think your summary has been sufficient that you would be generally supporting funding. For SEPTA, not with the service.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Uh, the public, any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash seventeen, supporting SEPTA, supporting SEPTA funding as described.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-five dash seventeen as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Back to you, Ruth.
Okay, well, uh, we are. Uh, the sewer report is that um, you guys have made a lot of progress, right?
Yep.
Yeah, um, most of the um. The upgrades are complete, right?
The three, three pump stations are complete.
Yeah, which is pretty exciting, um, including, you know. I mean, everything, not just parts of it. So um, that should help us to maintain those, you know, more efficient than. Um, and. We're just, you know, moving forward. The average monthly flow, for those who are interested. Uh, at the Betair Station was thirty-two million eight hundred and one thousand pounds.
That's the total monthly one on average.
Oh, the total.
We would have a major problem.
Million a day, basically.
Yes. Um, my liaison uh, positions are the Lowermoreland Township Authority. Um, did not meet this round, right? I forget where we are, right, next month?
July.
And the heart, the heart didn't meet, however. The uh, applicants didn't show up. And they are required to show up for us to discuss their applications, so they were tabled until. When they come back. Yeah, it's a shame, but. You know, uh, for those of us, for those people that are members of our hardboard, if you're out there and you're listening, thank you. And I'm sorry that happened. That completes my.
Thank you, Commissioner Housen. That concludes our agenda items for this evening. Now the board will take public participation on non-agenda items. Would anybody in the room like to address the board? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.